Yeah, yeah, it's always.
I get from the council.
So you already bring a lot of passion to him now.
Yeah.
But all the, all the people that do not believe in him.
You can sit down here.
Okay.
How are you? I'll be here. Okay, sounds good.
Oh, good. Yeah, good. Well, um, Joe's people responded to his emails and were like, your best wishes.
I was at the last time, two hours before we. Right. Two hours to get there. I know.
I believe Friday.
My hope is that I. That was a nice video.
Once they go, she gets up.
Shall we get started?
Yes.
Okay.
How are you? I'm Audrey's mommy. Remember me? Good to see you.
All right. Shall we?
Good evening. I would now like to call to order the meeting of the City County Council for June the sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. And we will begin our meeting with the prayer and pledge of allegiance led by Reverend Potter.
Let us bow our heads in prayer. Etral and wonderful God, we must come to you first and say thank you for your kindness, your long suffering and patience with us. This is the day that you made and we rejoice and we're glad in it. You see this body of believers and body of leaders, and we ask, Lord, that you would circle them with your love and kindness and your blessings. Let equality, love, patience rest upon each one of them. Do for Indianapolis what nobody else can do but you. Bring us together as one, and we thank you for that now in the precious name of our Lord Saviour, Jesus Christ. Amen. States of America, to the Republic for which stands a nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. The Emancipation Proclamation said something very simple, that eighteen sixty-three, the slave was free. They didn't get the email, and they were not free until eighteen sixty-five. As leaders, we got to make sure equality always works for everybody. No matter the color, no matter the standards, no matter anything, we get equality for all. God bless you in Jesus' name.
The Emancipation Proclamation was issued in nineteen, I'm sorry, eighteen sixty-three. Did not take full force to effect until June of eighteen sixty-five. The translation, the carrying of the word by telegraph, horseback, what have you, arrived in Texas. And that's when they heard about it. Those that were made slaves were only freed in those areas of the country that chose to succeed from the Union. President Lincoln issued a proclamation, "Free no slave." In eighteen sixty-five, that's when it took effect. I want to appreciate and thank all of my councillors and those in attendance and the pastor for giving such a wonderful prayer. And thank you all for acknowledging June tenth. This has been done all over the country, all over the world. Thank you all. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing this special privilege. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Councillors, please select your green button to indicate your attendance. There are twenty-three councillors present. Councillors Mascary and Gray are being excused for this evening. And in honor of the Juneteenth holiday this evening, IMPD Patrol Officer Simone Burris will lead the council in the singing of the early verses of "Lift Every Voice and Sing." And councillors, I believe in front of you, you have, you have the words so that we can, that we can join her in chorus. Thank you.
Lift every voice and sing till earth and heaven ring. Ring with the harmonies of liberty. Let our rejoicing rise high as the listening skies. Let it resound loud as the rolling seas. Sing a song full of the faith that the dark past has taught us. Sing a song full of the hope that the present has brought us. Facing the rising sun of our new day begun. Let us march on till victory is won. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. So this next item on our agenda is official communications. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen, you are hereby notified that regular meetings of the City County Council and Police, Fire and Solid Waste Collection Special Service District Councils will be held in the City County Building in the Council Chambers on Monday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven o'clock P.M. The purposes of such meetings being to conduct any and all business that may properly come before regular meetings of the councils. Sincerely, Bob Osley, President, City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, a call is to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, May thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. A copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number one sixty-seven, two thousand and twenty-two. Said hearing to be held on Monday, May twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-two, at five thirty P.M. in the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, pursuant to the laws of the state of Indiana, a call is to be published in the Court and Commercial Record and in the Indianapolis Star on Friday, May twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two. A copy of a notice of public hearing on proposal number one eighty, two thousand and twenty-two. Said hearing to be held on Monday, June sixth, two thousand and twenty-two, at seven o'clock P.M. In the Public Assembly Room of the City County Building. Respectfully, Serita Hughes, Clerk of the City County Council. Ladies and gentlemen, I have approved with my signature and delivered this day to the Clerk of the City County Council, Serita Hughes, the following ordinances. Fiscal ordinance number six, general ordinance numbers seventeen through twenty-four. Special ordinance number five, general resolution number seventeen. Special resolution numbers thirteen through nineteen. Joseph H. Hoxatt, Mayor. Mr. President, this concludes the official communications.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Do I have consent? The next item on our agenda is approval of journals for May the second, two thousand and twenty-two. Do I have consent? Let's now proceed to presentation of petitions, memorials and special resolutions. And this first item on our agenda is proposal number two sixteen, which recognizes the fifty-third anniversary of the Stonewall riots and the June celebration of Pride Month.
Thank you, Mr. President. Happy Pride Month, everybody. This is City County Special Resolution Number Twenty, a special resolution recognizing the fifty-third anniversary of the Stonewall riots and the June celebration of Pride Month. Whereas Pride Month celebrates and honors the LGBTQ plus community who call Indiana home and have made a significant contributions to our city and state in every aspect, including the fields of education, law, health, business, science, research, economic development, architecture, fashion, sports, government, music, film, politics, technology, literature and civil rights, and?
Whereas the LGBTQ plus community has come a great distance towards equality through the efforts of grassroots organizers and nonprofit organizations who have created a groundswell of support and a culture of acceptance. And whereas pride is a celebration of visibility, despite the continued discrimination and dehumanization that many LGBTQ plus people face, our community has come under attack as our State House has decided to villainize trans children who just want to play sports. And whereas we know that attacks on the trans community costs much more than just not getting to play on a high school team. According to a study from the American Academy of Pediatrics, more than half of transgender male teens who participated in the survey reported attempting suicide in their lifetime. While twenty-nine point nine percent of transgender female teens said they attempted suicide. And among non-binary youth, forty-one point eight percent of respondents stated that they had attempted suicide at some point in their lives.
Whereas many LGBTQ plus youth, especially transgender and gender non-conforming individuals, experience family rejection, bullying and harassment, or unsafe, or feel unsafe for simply being who they are, all of which are added risk factors for suicide. And whereas our city prides itself on welcoming everyone to the point of inscribing our welcome on the cornerstone of our old city hall. "I myself am a citizen of no mean city," by Mayor Charles Book Walter in nineteen oh nine. We stand today in solidarity with our LGBTQ, our LGBTQ plus community and all those who believe in equality to say that Indianapolis truly does welcome all. We, whereas, and whereas we will continue to urge state legislators to craft legislation that supports our children, like fully funding public schools, funding adequate mental health care support for our children and young adults, and leveling the playing field by fully funding girls' sports, and?
Whereas we urge all government entities, community leaders, businesses, schools and individuals to respect and honor our diverse community and to build a culture of inclusivity and equity all year long. Now therefore be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and Marion County, Indiana. Section one, we, the City of Indianapolis and City County Council, declare June twenty-twenty-two to be Pride Month. Section two, we, the City County Council, affirm our support of the LGBTQ plus community. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. Section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC thirty-six dash three dash four dash fourteen. And, Mr. President, so move.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. In two thousand and twelve, I took my first seat in this chamber as this body's first openly LGBT member. In, openly, I say openly. So I'm sure there were others who were not so open. And that speaks to how society has evolved now. We have four of us who are here before you, the LGBT Caucus. And we are here proud to present this resolution and offer to speak a few remarks. The President of the Board, Jenny Boitz?
Boitz.
Boitz. Boitz. Thank you.
Good evening. Great to meet you. As Councilwoman Adams had mentioned, my name's Jenny Boitz. I'm here representing the most racially diverse board and the most gender diverse board that Indy Pride has seen. So I'm glad to be here today. This is reminding me of the fact that two truths can be true, can happen at once. And the first truth is that tonight we can celebrate this, and I thank you on behalf of the board, on behalf of the communities we serve. Thank you. This is a major milestone. The second truth is that was mentioned before, is we are less than two weeks from a coordinated onslaught against our trans brothers and sisters in this state. So I would ask and challenge you all, when you think about the celebratory nature of the month ahead, that we continue to leverage both our power and our platform that you all have here. We will continue to coordinate and organize to make sure that every single one of our LGBTQ brothers and sisters in this state are protected, are celebrated, and know they are worthy and worthy of that celebration. So thank you. What we know is that joy is an act of resistance, and so we will be joyful in the weeks ahead. We invite you all to the celebratory festivities throughout the month, including Saturday's parade and the festival, and would invite you to continue to build relationships and to continue to advocate with us and for us in the months ahead as well. So thank you so much. Thanks.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number two seventeen, which recognizes Sixth National Youth Poet Laureate Alyssa Gaines.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have a special resolution recognizing Alyssa Gaines as the Sixth National Youth Poet Laureate of the United States. Whereas Alyssa Gaines was named the two thousand and twenty-two National Youth Poet Laureate by Urban Word, the founding organization which celebrates our nation's top youth poets that are committed to artistic excellence, civic engagement and social justice. And whereas Ms. Gaines was one of four National Youth Poet Laureate finalists chosen from a field of more than sixty-five youth poet laureates from across the country, representing Midwest as the Regional Youth Poet Laureate Ambassador, and?
Whereas Ms. Gaines was named the inaugural Youth Poet Laureate for the City of Indianapolis in two thousand and nineteen by Voices Corp, a local organization that works in partnership with the national program to identify local youth poets who represent the best of the city's literary excellence and civic leadership to create opportunities and resources to use their voices to inspire change. And whereas Ms. Gaines grew up on the east side of Indianapolis in Lawrence Township, and she uses her experiences and relationships grounded around her community to shape her poetry and art, and?
And whereas through her work, Ms. Gaines strives to balance themes of hardship and triumph in her communities through the musicality of language and attention to natural and religious images. And whereas during the commencement program at the Kennedy Center, Ms. Gaines performed her poem, "La Grimas Negras", a piece that blends song and spoken word about community transitions and finding joy in times of grief and mourning.
Whereas not only has Ms. Gaines earned this top honor, her work has been featured in Scholastic's, quote, "Best Teen Writing", received five National Scholastic Gold Medals, published in the Indianapolis Recorder and by Teach for America, has had the opportunity to perform her work at the Library of Congress and has accepted awards for her writing in Carnegie Hall, to name a few. And whereas Ms. Gaines is looking forward to using her experience to continue to work to increase fine arts access and accessibility through leading and organizing writing workshops with local organizations to bring in more diverse students and perspectives to the world of fine art, and?
Whereas Ms. Gaines is a recent graduate of Park Tudor School, and the City County Council looks forward to her continued successes at the University of Wisconsin-Madison and beyond. Now therefore be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the City County Council values the fine arts and encourages their improved accessibility to diverse communities. Section two, the City County Council commends Alyssa Gaines on her many achievements to date and thanks her for bringing her voice and reputation of the Indianapolis community to the National Youth Poet Laureate stage. Section three, the mayor is invited to join in this resolution by affixing his signature here too, which he has. And section four, this resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC thirty-six dash three dash four dash fourteen. And, Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. Motion carries. Back to the speakers. Thank you, Mr. President. With your permission, I'd like to invite Alyssa Gaines to the podium, please. Please do.
Thank you so much. This is a huge honor for me. Indianapolis is the city that named me. It's where I come home to. And in all of my endeavors, writing and otherwise, I take with me lessons that I learned from the east side of Indianapolis and from growing up here. And so I'm super excited in this coming year and the years to follow to use my writing and my civic engagement to not only support my national community, but to take those lessons that I learned here in Indianapolis to another level. And I'm excited to come home and also bring, you know, this change in civic engagement to my own city. And to be honored this way is, is super exciting. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you so much. Congratulations. Thank you all. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Great job. Keep up the good work.
The next item on our agenda is proposal number 218, which recognizes the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department's Second Annual Join IMPD Week.
All right. City County Special Resolution Number 222022. A special resolution recognizing the Indianapolis Metropolitan Police Department's IMPD Second Annual Join IMPD Week. Whereas law enforcement agencies around the country are facing difficulty recruiting qualified individuals, but the City of Indianapolis can be assured that IMPD recruiters are working hard to recruit individuals to make our city safer. And whereas IMPD has approved this by the City County Council to increase staffing up to 1,843 strong, they are focusing on recruiting and retention, which is essential, and adding more patrol officers, reserve officers, public safety officers, and public assistance officers that will play a vital role to keep the community safe. And?
Whereas the IMPD Human Resources Resources Offices has streamlined the application process, providing the physical application test and written test the same day, making it more encouraging for applicants from out of state to attend. The recruiting unit is intentionally engaging more contact with each applicant during this process. And?
Whereas the IMPD Recruiting Unit is hosting PAR, Pre-Academy Readiness, at the IMPD Training Academy Weekly. This workout is focused on getting an applicant into better shape to pass the physical agility test. The PAR also builds confidence and builds mentor relationship in current officers, providing highly successful for the candidates. And whereas IMPD has implemented over 5,000 signing bonuses for recruit officers and lateral officers to complete with neighborhood police departments. And is also offering a $2,500 referral program for current officers who refer successful recruit officers. And whereas?
And whereas Join IMPD Week will kick off on Monday, June 6, 2022, that's today, and run through June 10, 2022, with a week of activities that will include coffee with a recruiter at Starbucks at 71st and Bedford, tea with recruiter at Tea Me Cafe, start your adventure with IMPD at the Indianapolis Zoo, and the West Side Chamber of Commerce Job Fair at the Pike Freshman Center. And whereas IMPD is grateful for the mayor's office and the City County Council's support and partnership as they focus on and promote those individuals interested in joining the police department. Now therefore? Therefore be it resolved by the City County Council of the City of Indianapolis and of Marion County, Indiana. Section one, the Indianapolis City County Council proudly joins the mayor's office in their recognition of IMPD and their efforts to keep the city of Indianapolis and its constituents safe.
Section two, the council hereby heartily thanks IMPD for putting their lives on the line to ensure the vitality of the community can continue to thrive. Section three, the mayor is invited to adjoint this resolution by affixing his signature heretofore. Section four, the resolution shall be in full force and effect upon adoption and compliance with IC 36-3-4-14. This special resolution was supported by Councilors Anay, Bain, Dilk, Hart, Maury, and was passed by the City County Council the sixth day of June 2022.
Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, signify by nay. Motion carries. Back to the speakers.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to take a point of privilege here to thank our IMPD officers and all of our first responders. When chaos is happening and people are running away from the danger, they're running towards the danger. And without them, it'd be a scary place to know where we'd live today. With that, I would like to welcome up Representative Chief Taylor and one of his representatives from IMPD to say a few words.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you, President Osley, and other members of the City County Council for this opportunity to speak before you and to thank you for this special resolution. This morning, Mayor Hogshead, Councilor Anay, Chief Taylor, Assistant Chief Bailey, members of the command staff and other officers, we were all joined together during a press conference to kick off our Second Annual Join IMPD Week. The opportunity to come before you to receive this special resolution only adds to the significance of this day. We are incredibly grateful and honored to have your support. You gave your approval to increase our staffing levels, as we heard, by 1843, and every day recruiters are out there working, trying to meet those goals. But we need your help. We need everyone's help. It is critical that we take an all-city approach when it comes to recruitment. As we maneuver throughout the week, we have partnered with community stakeholders to help spread the word about our hiring process. The entire week is jam-packed with events designed to attract, focus on, and promote those individuals who are interested in joining our workforce. I want to thank our recruiters, Charles Parker, Molly McAfee, for organizing the week's activities. Tomorrow, from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m., we will be at our IMPD Training Academy for our pre-academy readiness program, and we heard a little bit about that a few minutes ago. And at this time, I would like to invite, first of all, I want to go back, I want to invite all of you all, please join us tomorrow evening for our PAR sessions. It's not just about the workout, but it's about the support, the encouragement, and the confidence that those applicants get by participating in PAR. So again, I want to thank you all for this opportunity, and at this time, I would like to invite Officer Charles Parker to the podium to go into a little bit more detail about what PAR means, not just to us, but also to the community.
First thing I want to say, I'm a man of few words, so it'd be brief and simple. PAR is pretty much a program where we work out with a lot of the applicants. What we do is, we get them together and get them ready for the academy. So we work on the basic things for the fitness test. It's also a way for us to mentor. So as you know, there, or you might not know, there's only two recruiters for our department. With several hundred applicants, it's kind of hard to stay engaged with everybody and keep them interested in becoming a police officer. So PAR is a good way for us to get everybody together and build those relationships. I would like to also thank everybody for the support. Coming out to PAR would be amazing, a way to show our department even more support, and that's it.
Mr. President, Chairman Robinson and Chairman Ray both want to sign up with him and meet him out there tomorrow night.
We have workouts designed for everyone, so I have individuals that have told me, hey, I can't pass the test, and I work with them, and I'm going to get them in the academy, so.
So in closing, thank you again just for the support. I really believe the council has done an amazing job in showing us support, not only to myself, but to all the officers. Even though technically we only have two recruiters, really the whole department, and I believe the council has done a great job of trying to encourage quality applicants to come out and become officers. It's a tough job, but it certainly is worth it, and we certainly love this city. So thank you.
Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposals number 165 and 169 together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposal number 165 nominates Joe Perrin to the Speedway Economic Development Commission. Proposal number 169 nominates Mark Young for the appointment to the Economic Development Commission. Both proposals passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Second.
The motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 176. Refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Council Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. With the council's consent, I'd like to take 176, 177, 178, and 179 together.
Consent.
Thank you. Proposals 176, 177, 178, and 179 are appointments to the Ethics Commission. It appoints Charles Bush II, Paige Felts, Shane Hatchett, and Christopher McElwee to the Ethics Commission. All three passed with a unanimously 10 to 0, and that, or, sorry, guys, this is the first time doing consent. All of them passed together and unanimously. I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's go to the board for our vote. Motion carries 23 to zero. The next item on our agenda is introduction of proposals. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 205, introduced by Councilor Osley, refer to the Administration and Finance Committee, appoints Holly Harrington to the Indianapolis Marion County Building Authority Board of Trustees. Proposal number 206, introduced by Councilor Adamson, refer to the Public Works Committee, approves an additional appropriations totaling $15 million in the 2022 budget of the Department of Public Works, Department of Parks and Recreation, and Office of Finance and Management, Transportation General, Parks General, and Consolidated County General Funds to finance the design, construction, and inspection of recreational and capital infrastructure projects, and for additional recruitment measures to address enterprise staffing needs. Proposal number 207, introduced by Councilor Jones, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, approves a payment in lieu of taxes pilot by Pedcor Investments LP, or LLP? Is that correct? I'm sorry. As provided by IC 36-3-2-12 for the City Heights Apartment Homes Affordable Housing Project, being financed in part with low-income housing tax credits consisting of a 200 apartment workforce housing facility for low and moderate income individuals and families to be located at Bixler Road and Southeast Street in District 16. Proposal number 208, introduced by Councilor Ethan Evans, refer to the Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee, amends Chapter 231 of the Code regarding the Department of Metropolitan Development to add Article 8 to establish an Affordable Housing Commission. Proposal number 209, introduced by Council Robinson, refer to the Public Safety and Criminal Justice Committee, amends the quorum requirement for the membership of the, I'm sorry, the Marion County Community Corrections Advisory Board. Proposal numbers 210 through 215, refer to the Public Works Committee. Proposal number 210, introduced by Council Adamson, approves additional appropriations totaling $5 million in the 2022 budget of the Department of Public Works, Transportation General, and Stormwater General Funds to finance increased contractual costs for the and for the design, construction, and inspection of transportation and stormwater capital infrastructure projects. Proposal number 211, introduced by Council Maury, approves a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Breckenridge Emerald Ridge at the Point, Diamond Ridge at the Point, Franklin Park Estates, Birchwood Park, and Franklinshire subdivisions in District 25. Proposal number 212, introduced by Council Oliver, approves a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Devon Woods, Devon Hills, Devon Ridge, Devon Lake, and Devon Court subdivisions in District 9. Proposal number 213, introduced by Council Gray, approves a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Georgetown Crossing, Highwoods, Bonham Place, Wythe's 30th, and Kessler, Green Hills, Wood Creek, Robertson Village, Cheswick Place, Fairway Woods, Northerner Estates, Wolfington on Kessler Boulevard, and Arbordale Highlands subdivisions in District 8. Proposal number 214, introduced by Council Ray, approves a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Park Valley Estates, Building Trades, Glick's Brookview, Trinity Manor, Autumn Ridge, Creekwood Hills, Springs of Hampton, Grassy Creek, Creekside Woods, Creekside Meadows, and Cedar Springs subdivisions in District 19. Proposal number 215, introduced by Councilors Bain and Anay, approves a speed limit reduction to 25 miles per hour in the Glenview Park, Valley Ridge Farms, I'm sorry, Valley Ridge Farms, and Hunter's Run subdivisions in Districts 20 and 23. Mr. President, this concludes the introductions.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. The next item on our agenda is special orders, priority business. Proposal numbers 219 through 229, and proposal numbers 231 through 237, 2022, are all rezonings that were certified to the council for approval by the Metropolitan Development Commission in May of 2022. If no councilor wishes to call down any of these proposals for reconsideration, they will pass into law. Does anyone wish to call down any of the proposals for reconsideration? All right, seeing none, proposal numbers 219 through 229, and proposal numbers 231 through 237, 2022, will now pass into law. Proposal number 230, 2022, is a rezoning ordinance certified for denial by the Metropolitan Development Commission on May 17 of 2022. If no councilor wishes to call down the proposal for reconsideration, the action of the MDC will stand as denied. Does anyone wish to call down the proposal for reconsideration? Hearing, hearing none, seeing none, the proposal will stand as denied. The next item on our agenda is special orders, public hearing. And before we open the floor to public comments, I would like to call on General Counsel Kim to review the ground rules for public testimony as adopted by this body. Ms. Kim.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we open the floor to public comments, we would like to remind council members and the public of a few ground rules, so everyone can have a fair chance to speak and be heard. It is important that we each observe the following rules. First, each speaker will be limited to two minutes. Second, any public comments must reasonably relate to the agenda item under consideration. Third, speakers who stray from the item under consideration or become unduly repetitious may be asked to move on to their next point or conclude their comments. Finally, attendees who cause disruptions that prevent the council from pursuing through tonight's agenda in a reasonably efficient manner will be removed. tonight's agenda in a reasonably efficient manner will be removed. Please remember that some types of threatening speech or incitement to violence are not protected by the First Amendment at all. We will deal with those issues if they come up, but we don't think they will. And now, Mr. President, if a council member asks for consent to adopt these rules, we can proceed to public comments at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Ms. Kim. The next item on our agenda then is proposal number 180, refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 180, 2022, renews the Marion County Health Department's Safe Syringe Access and Support Program by adopting the declarations of the Marion County of the Director of the Marion County Public Health Department and approving the Safe Syringe Access and Support Program. President Osley introduced Madison Weintraut, I'm sorry, Madison, Assistant Administrator of the Infectious Disease and Safe Syringe Access and Support Program for a brief presentation. Ms. Weintraut gave a summary of the program's progress since its launch in 2019. She stated that they service nearly 2,000 participants, of which 202 of them have engaged with a recovery program. She stated that in 2022, they began their partnership with Bellflower Clinic to provide sexually transmitted disease testing and treatment. Since the program's launch, they have distributed nearly 26,000 naloxone kits directly to people who inject drugs, with participants reporting 1,148 overdoses being reversed. They've also seen hepatitis C cases drop dramatically. At the conclusion of her presentation, Chair Osley opened the floor for councilors to ask questions and for public testimony. Counsel Jackson moved, seconded by Counsel Lewis, to send proposal number 180, 2022 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion passed unanimously. I so move.
Thank you. The motions improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? All right. Seeing none, is there anyone in the room who would like to comment on proposal number 180? Seeing none, Ms. Weintraut, were there comments that you'd like to make this evening?
Sorry, I'm hard hearing. What was that?
I said, first of all, welcome. Are there any comments, comments that you would like to make this evening?
Well, your summary took the words right out of my mouth, but I'm really thankful for the opportunity to be here and answer any questions that you guys have, and thank you for considering this for a two-year extension.
Thank you very much. If there are no further comments from members of the council, then let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero.
Thank you all.
There is no business under special orders, unfinished business. So we'll now proceed to special orders, final adoption. And this next item on our agenda is proposal number 95. Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 95 approves a statement of benefits of Gershman Partners and applicant for tax abatement for property located in an ERA. This proposal introduces the Madera Project, a premier boutique office space in Broad Ripple. The project will begin construction in August 2022 with a total anticipated real estate improvement investment of 16.9 million. Mr. Gershman added that as part of their plan, 5% of the estimated savings amounting over 67.6 million will be donated to the Broad Ripple Village Association. These funds are expected to be used toward pedestrian infrastructure improvements, including the Broad Ripple Avenue Improvement Project. This project is located in Counsel Potts District. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Yes, Counsel Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is an exciting project that is going to bring good-paying jobs to Broad Ripple, which is going to greatly benefit the nearby locally-owned businesses, especially those that have been hardest hit during this ongoing pandemic, and I encourage all of my colleagues to support this proposal tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good, thank you. Additional comments from councilors? Counsel Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. I agree with Counsel Potts, and I had the opportunity to meet with the BRVA about this the other day, and if Counsel Potts is amenable, I'd like to go on as a co-sponsor.
Additional comments? From councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 167. Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I would like to take proposal number 167 and 168 together. Thank you. Proposal number 167 approves a declaratory resolution and economic development plan and declares the area designated as a new TIF allocation area known as the Shorty Real Street Allocation Area. Proposal number 168 authorizes the issuance of an economic development tax increment revenue bond for BC Real Street Partners LLC in a maximum aggregated principal amount not to exceed eight million dollars for the purpose of providing funds to pay the cost of public improvements in connection with the Shorty Real Street Development Project consisting of two-story, single-family homes, three-story townhomes with garages, and three-story garden-style apartments buildings with garage and parking. This project is also located in Counsel Potts District. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Counsel Potts.
Thank you, Mr. President. As our communities continue to thrive and grow, we often hear about concerns related to infrastructure and driving safety, and as this nearby property has developed, this was a significant concern from the community. So this funding process we're voting on tonight is a key step in keeping drivers safe on Indy's far north side, and I'd encourage all my colleagues to support this tonight. Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good. Additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 175. Refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 175, 2022, amends the complete street policy in Chapter 431, Article 8 of the Revised Code. Counsel Barth stated that the council has strengthened the complete streets ordinance to ensure systematic improvements in how the city's built environment supports pedestrians, cyclists, and neighborhoods. He stated they worked with neighborhood advocates and listened to constituent concerns to make needed enhancements. Counselor Barth stated that some of the changes to the existing ordinance included a dedicated website to hold all elements of the program and formalizing the fatal crash review team. Exception reporting will now require supporting documentation and data. Departments are now required to create criteria that they will use to make decisions and present an annual report during council committee meetings. Counsel Barth introduced Dan Parker, Director, Department of Public Works. Director Parker stated that on behalf of the administration, NDDPW, and the transportation professionals of their engineering division, they stand in support of the proposed revisions to the complete streets ordinance. Director Parker detailed the many projects that have been completed since the implementation of complete street ordinance and stated that they look forward to the updates to the ordinance. Chair Osley opened the floor for councilors to ask questions and public testimony. Counsel Lewis moved, seconded by Counsel Brown, to amend proposal number 175, 2022. That motion passed unanimously. Counsel Lewis moved, seconded by Counsel Jackson, to send proposal 175, 2022 as amended to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion passed unanimously. I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Counsel Barth.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a few things to note. One, I think it's worth noting that it is the 10-year anniversary of the original complete streets ordinance being proposed. Then, as now, it's my honor to work with Majority Leader Lewis on passing the original version and this updated version, as well as with several other co-sponsors. There's something I'd really like to emphasize in that this proposal, this update to our existing complete streets ordinance, is something that's been done with broad support and significant coalition building. I especially want to thank the city of Indianapolis and Director Parker and folks at DPW for all their support in working through this with me. Over the last several months, council staff have been incredible, incredibly diligent and hardworking in making this happen. I also want to thank the advocacy community who have put in so many hours thinking about this, giving me and Counsel Lewis ideas on how to strengthen this proposal, and getting out and communicating with their constituencies about the importance of having this proposal be passed. I have a letter that has been shared with councilors with 40 organizations who support this. Out of those 40, I want to especially note the AARP in Indiana, Amber Mar, the American Heart Association in Indiana, Danielle Patterson, and Health by Design, Kim Irwin, who are all the leads in working with us in advancing this proposal. At the end of the day, I think it's really critically important that we continue the process we started 10 years ago, which is reorienting our built environment to support all the users of the streets, not just drivers. We need to send a clear signal to motorists that we need to share the road. The road needs to be safe, and our cyclists, our pedestrians, and everyone else using our corridors should be safe, and our neighborhoods should be secure, and as motorists pass through, they should respect our neighborhoods and make sure that everyone there feels confident and strong as they go about their day-to-day business, and that's what this proposal is about. So thank you very much, and I'm hopeful we can get unanimous support tonight.
Vice President Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thanks to Counselors Barth and Leader Lewis for collaborating this enormous undertaking, collaborating with numerous stakeholders throughout the city, a very diverse array of individuals throughout the city. I was proud to co-sponsor the original 10 years ago, and I'm proud to co-sponsor this one as well, and this very needed update, and I hope my colleagues will join us all in supporting this. Thanks.
Chairwoman Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say to Counselor Chairman Barth and Majority Leader Lewis, thank you for your work and undertaking on this, and to the other co-sponsors, as I'm a co-sponsor too. One thing that stands out for this proposal for me is saving lives. I think that's important, keeping that at the forefront is changing and saving lives and moving forward with that in our city. And like Chairman Barth just said, keeping, making the roads safe for everybody that's that takes our streets, and whether it's bicyclists, pedestrians, and not those who are driving, but how do we do that, and looking out for the safety, and what does that look like, infrastructure-wise? So for me, we've lost a lot of lives, especially in my district, and so improving the system that doesn't change the behaviors of drivers, and hopefully that some of this change will help create an awareness, is what I'm looking for, to a degree as well, but saving lives as well, improving safety. So thank you.
Very good. Majority Leader Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to publicly thank my colleague Chairman Barth for his leadership, his commitment to our city, and his willingness to always tackle the difficult issues. So thank you, Chairman Barth.
Additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Very good. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 181. Refer to Rules and Public Policy Committee. Counsel Brown.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 181, 2022, amends Chapter 192 of the Code regarding compensation of elected officials. Brandon Hergit, City County Council Chief Financial Officer and Policy Director, Eva Flick, City County Council Fiscal and Policy Analyst, and Tom Guevara, IU Public Policy Institute Director, gave a presentation reviewing the current code and results of the 2019 council compensation study. Mr. Hergit stated that the elected official's compensation is set by code and is not subject to the annual city-county budget process. He also stated that the council's base salaries, per DM raises, stipends for leadership, and meeting attendance limits have not been updated since 2002. Mr. Hergit stated that the roles and responsibilities of councilors have changed over the last 20 years. He stated that the Indianapolis population has grown by 116,284 since 2000 census, and that he, and that the demand for responsiveness from councilors has changed. Tom Guevara stated that in the 2019 compensation study, they studied, they compared the Indianapolis council to Nashville, Louisville, Jacksonville, and Denver. The study showed that Indianapolis has the lowest salary for part-time councilors. He stated that researchers, he stated that researchers, sorry, researchers put together a randomized survey asking citizens their thoughts on Indianapolis councilor's pay. The majority of the opinions were that councilors were largely underpaid. Eva Flick stated that when calculating the proposed comparable competitive wage, they did not take, they did not just take the average of the data from comparable-sized cities, but they adjusted for variables between the cities such as city size, council size, and the cost of living for each city. Brendan Hergit stated that the analysis was based on the assumption of 100% participation and attendance. He stated this could increase the council's budget by 652,000, which is 0.05% of the council's $1.3 billion budget. He stated that these funds have no impact to public safety and infrastructure budgets. At the conclusion of the presentation, Chair Osley opened the floor to councilors to ask for questions and for public testimony. Counsel Lewis moved, seconded by Counsel Jackson, to send proposal number 181, 2022 to the full council with a due pass recommendation. The motion was carried by a vote of seven to four, with Counselors Ane, Dilk, Hart, and Maury casting the negative votes. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Mr. Minister.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's my understanding, and I just want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, that there is currently a review for compensation of city-county-wide, enterprise-wide employees underway. Is that correct?
Yes.
And that excludes elected officials?
Correct.
Okay. You know, while I think that it's no secret that the council is woefully underpaid, I would much prefer a more conservative approach to this proposal. For those reasons, I will be voting against this proposal this evening, as I did in committee.
Very good. All right, thank you. Additional comments from councilors? All right, seeing none, let us then proceed to the board for our vote. The motion carries eighteen to five. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 201. Refer to Metropolitan and Economic Development Committee. Chairwoman Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number 201 amends Chapter 115, Article 3 of the Code regarding the Central Indiana Redevelopment Authority. Indiana Redevelopment Authority have successfully acquired grants for infrastructure development in their respective region. It is believed that by coming together as a region, areas are more competitive when applying for funding. Ms. Schaefer, Chief of Staff, explained that Central Indiana has an RDA which was formed in 2015. Due to the adoption of the Marion County Transit Plan, the current RDA is no longer encompassing of the Central Indiana metro area. She added that the proposal will dissolve the outdated RDA and create an RDA that is aligned with the updated state law. This RDA will begin with Marion, Hamilton, and Anderson Counties as their members. The proposal passed out of committee by a vote of nine to zero. Mr. President, I so move.
Motion is improperly moved and seconded. Other comments from councilors? Seeing none, let us then proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number 172. Refer to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. With consent, I'd like to take proposals 171.
With consent, I'd like to take proposals one seventy-two and seventy-three together. Thank you. Proposal number one seventy-two authorizes speed limit reductions to twenty-five miles per hour in the River Run Copeland Mills Estates, Old Mill Park, Parkview, Oak Terrace, Crossfield, High Acre Manor, and Roberts Creek subdivisions in District twenty. Proposal number one seventy-three authorizes a speed limit reduction to twenty-five miles per hour in the Copperfield, Pine Springs, Eagle's Eagle Nest, Castleton Estates, Hunter Woods, Yorkshire Yorkshire, Castle Cove, Shadow Ridge, Shadland Station, Scarborough Village, Fairwood Hills, Fairwood Hills, and Castilla subdivisions in District four. Counsel Boots moved, seconded by Counsel Carlino, to send proposals numbers one seventy-two and one seventy-three two thousand twenty-two to the full council with a due pass recommendation. That motion carried by a vote of ten to zero, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded are the comments from counselors. All right, seeing none, let us proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. The next item on our agenda is proposal number one seventy-four, referred to Public Works Committee. Chairman Adamson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Proposal number one seventy-four authorizes weight limit restrictions on residential streets surrounding Garfield Park South due to a planned bridge construction project in District twenty-one. Counsel Gray moved, seconded by Counsel Boots, to send proposal number one seventy-four to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and that motion carried by a vote of ten to zero, and I so move.
Motion's improperly moved and seconded are the comments from counselors. All right, seeing none, let's proceed to the board for our vote. Motion carries twenty-three to zero. There is no business under special service district councils, and there is no business under new business. So the next item on our agenda is announcements and adjournment. The docketed agenda for this meeting of council having been completed, the chair will now entertain motions for adjournment.
Mr. President.
Chair recognizes Counsel Maury.
Mr. President, I have been asked to offer the following motion for adjournment by all counselors in memory of Roger Cordy, by all by Counselor Osley in memory of Reggie Jones and Rodney Bynum, by Counselor Ethan Evans in memory of Armon Rowley, by Counselor Mascary in memory of Pete Swartz and Thomas Mascary. Mr. President, I would like to move the adjournment of this meeting of the Indianapolis City County Council in recognition of and the respect for the life and contributions of those persons I have here specifically named. I further ask, I respectfully ask the support of fellow counselors, I further request that the motion be made part of the permanent records of this body, and that a letter bearing the council's seal and the signature of the president be sent to the family of each person advising of this action.
Thank you, Counsel Maury. Hearing no objections, the motion is received, and the requests are so ordered. Hearing no further motions, we are adjourned. Thank you, counselors.